Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Newsroom Pub. I'm Milwaukee Press Club President Corey Hess from Wisconsin Public Radio. I'm so happy to be here today with Cavalier Johnson, President of the Milwaukee Common Council. Before we get started, I'd like to thank our sponsors. Our presenting sponsor is Spectrum News One. WIS Politics partners with us as part of this ongoing series in Milwaukee. Other sponsors include UW-Milwaukee, Wisconsin Academy of Global Education and Training, 1125 at Pabst, Milwaukee Police Association, The Firm Consulting, Medical College of Wisconsin, and Spectrum. I would like to welcome our media panel. Today, we have Allison Durr from the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Jason Fetschner from Spectrum News One, and Edgar Mendez from Neighborhood News Service. Now, back to Cavalier. He was elected to the Milwaukee Common Council in 2016 and reelected in 2020. He was chosen by his peers to serve as Common Council President last year, and he will become mayor as soon as Tom Barrett heads to Luxembourg, so I'm not sure when that will be. He has also announced plans to run for mayor when a special election is held. Thank you, Cavalier, for being here.
Good afternoon, everybody. Why were we so quiet? Good afternoon, everybody. So y'all gave Corey all the love and didn't give me anything. So, good afternoon. It's my pleasure to join you guys again at the Newsmaker Luncheon. I am Cavalier Johnson, Common Council President for the City of Milwaukee. This luncheon today came about not because of the position that I currently hold, but because of the one that I prospectively will hold, that's Acting Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, and if the people of our great city were gracious enough to have me, the elected mayor of the City of Milwaukee as well. And, you know, folks are not generally in a position to become mayor of a large American city. There's usually some background to it, and I want to inform people about what mine is, if you don't know. So, I was born and raised right here in Milwaukee. I attended Milwaukee Public Schools K through 12, kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. We didn't have a lot growing up. We moved to more places than I can recall. I do recall, though, times in our family's history where we didn't have access to food. I do recall times in our family's history where we didn't have work in plumbing or that the power was out. I spent my formative years in 53206, a zip code widely known for poverty and incarceration of black men. By the time black men reach my age, typically half of us have spent some time behind bars in that zip code. I know what it's like to go to sleep to the sounds of gunfire and sirens, and because of frequent moves, I was unable to attend one school from start to finish until I got to middle school at Daniel Webster on the northwest side of the city. Before Webster, it was Carlton, it was Honey Creek, it was Parkview, it was Fairview, it was Dover, and it was Lincoln Avenue Schools. For those of you keeping track, that's north side, southwest side, northwest side, southwest side, Bayview, and near south side, before eventually graduating from MPS at Bayview High School in 2005. When I was a boy, I learned lessons in life that stay with me to this day. Some of those are the following: Do good things, and good things will come to you. Don't chase money, chase purpose. And also to make sure that you get off the block and you expand your horizons. Those are lessons that I took to heart and have helped to guide me over the years. Twenty years ago, I had the opportunity to get involved in a pre-college program with the YMCA called Sponsor a Scholar, and that program had a goal of getting young kids in Milwaukee Public Schools from low-income families like me off to college. And for many of us, it was our, we were the first people in our family to go to college. Usually, I wear this green wristband with the four core values of the YMCA: caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility, every day to keep me grounded, let me know where I came from. The other part of that program is to get those same young people involved in service activities. And so, as a 14-year-old kid, I would wake up on Saturday mornings and go with some of my peers to Easter Seals or to feed the homeless, or, you know, we would go and help seniors to rake weeds or shovel snow and things like that, and I just really fell in love with the service aspect. That same year, this is 20 years ago, so it's 2001, 9/11 happened, and I watched, as a 14-year-old boy, President Bush go to what was left of the World Trade Center and just try to bring people together. And I had a light bulb that went out from my head back then that said, "Well, you know, I could go into government service, and I could marry that with the service to the community that I was doing at the YMCA." And I never, I just never looked back from that. I just never looked back from that. So I knew I wanted to go into the government service way back then. And a benefit of that, knowing what I wanted to do 20 years ago, was that I didn't need to change majors a million times when I got to college, and I did complete the program. I went to UW-Madison studying political science, and I didn't need to change majors because I already knew. My first spring break in college, because I was on a service train, I had been for a number of years at that point in my life, my first spring break in college was not to a beach in Florida, it was to New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina to help folks on the Gulf Coast down there. It was then to New York City to continue my work with the YMCA. It was to Chile to help refurbish a school for low-income children in Balpariso. It was back here to Milwaukee to help young people get their first summer jobs and for helping senior citizens to get back into the workforce. It was to Iowa to knock on doors for a United States Senator who happened to be running for President of the United States. He was a skinny kid with a funny name. You've probably heard him before. Again, I knew, though, that I wanted to contribute to my community this way, and so, as a very young man fresh out of college, guess what I did? I ran for office. And I ran for office twice, and twice I was demolished. I actually lost worse the second time than I did the first time, but it's a true, true story, but I, but I didn't quit. There's no quit here. I stayed at it. I stayed involved, and I eventually found myself as a young, 26-year-old African-American male in the mayor's office. And I was a low-level staffer, but I was working on community issues, and that was important to me. But I was still called to do this work, and so in 2016, I packed all my belongings. I left the mayor's office after working so hard to get there, and I ran for Alderman. And I was fortunate to be elected in the second district by the people there in 2016, ran for reelection in 2020, and was elected by my peers in 2020 as well to serve as Common Council President. And the duties of council president are to make sure that you fill in for the mayor in case that that situation arises, in case that time were to come. And that time is now coming, as Mayor Barrett is soon to be departing on an ambassadorship to Luxembourg. This city, our community, it tells people like me, it tells little black boys, little black girls, people of color generally, to focus on your education and to do well in school, and I did that. This community tells those same young people, little black boys, little black girls, young people of color, to make something of yourself, go to college, and these days more often, go to the trades or to the military, and I did that. It tells us to come back and to serve our community in some way, form, or fashion, and through workforce development and through my time in elective office, I've been doing that too. And so now, we're here. So what are the big three things I want to work on as mayor? Well, public safety and health certainly is at the top of the list. We have to focus on this, and no one's more concerned to think about public safety in this city than, you know, the parents of young children. I've got three. Reckless driving has been a scourge in Milwaukee for years, and we need new ideas to deal with it. We've had record homicides in Milwaukee last year and are on pace for a similar pattern this year. We've got too many people with too easy access to firearms in Milwaukee. That results in deadly violence on our streets every night. We've got to find the right balance to make sure that we have the appropriate number of sworn police officers versus civilianized police officers on our force. COVID-19 is a problem that we can solve. It's devastated us economically. It has devastated our education. It's devastated our health, and we have the best tool to defeat it before us right now, and that's a vaccine. And so, we encourage people to get it, and that's a message that I'll be pushing as mayor. We can handle some of these things by, again, civilianizing positions within the police department. If there are positions where civilians can take on, well, then let's have a civilian there so that we can get the sworn officers out into the streets where they're needed and where our constituents want them. We can transform the built environment to slow down traffic, install traffic calming speed humps, things like that, so that we make our roads useful not just for automobiles, but for all users of the roadway, including pedestrians and bicyclists and others. On guns, look, I attend the vigil for homicide victims every single year, and I see the pain in the lives of family members who have lost their loved ones. I've been home in this city when, just outside my door, a family member was shot five times. I've been here in the city where another, another family member simply knocked on the wrong door and was shot. I got a bullet casing on the mantle in the president's office across the street, given to me by one of the block watch captains in my district, just as a reminder about the serious issues we face with gun violence in Milwaukee. I got a bullet hole in my car right now, and I remember how afraid my own son was when somebody stepped onto my property and pulled, pulled a trigger. We also have to recognize that police can't do this job alone. They can't. Police even admit it. They're not a social service agency. They're designed to keep the peace. And so, we've got to do more with office violence prevention, and we've got to make sure that we're doing outreach to family members so that they're reaching out to the individuals in their lives, that they know one that they love, to encourage them to not commit harm, harmful acts to our community. Number two, on jobs, you know, we just haven't had a transformation on jobs like we've needed to in this community. For 40 years, we've been waiting for a silver bullet approach for large-scale manufacturing to return to Milwaukee, and it just isn't going to happen. And so, access to family-supporting jobs is key for safe and stable neighborhoods. If we want our neighborhoods to be cohesive and not porous, for our residents to be stable and not transient, we need to have access to better jobs with better wages. For 40 years, again, we've tried that approach for large-scale manufacturing, and it just hasn't happened. So, we should encourage youth and adults to enter into apprenticeships and to the trades. We should encourage small business growth here. We should have collaborative means of business development, just like the Evergreen Collaborative down in Cleveland. We should work to lower supply chains here and remote workers here. We should raise wages for our employees to help with retention as well as attraction. We should work with our partners at the county and at the state to finally solve the spatial mismatch so that we can get people who need access to family-supporting jobs in the city to family-supporting jobs available in the suburbs. And Madison is the third big area that I really want to focus on. We simply cannot get the things done that we need for Milwaukee without getting the legislature to come on board. We just can't. And so, I'm going to be a tireless advocate for Milwaukee. I'm not just going to be a new face for Milwaukee, I'm going to be a tireless advocate for it. Legislators can expect that when I'm mayor, I'll have what is basically, I'm calling a cot in the capital, and I'll be stressing the importance of the crucial need to have a strong partnership between the City of Milwaukee and the State of Wisconsin. Milwaukee is also the economic engine of our state. That's something that's not disputed. Everybody knows it. And so, as goes Milwaukee, so then does go the entire state. And I'll carry that message to Madison and anywhere across the state necessary to get the job done for this city. I've already started doing that, as a matter of fact, as council president, and it was actually pretty heartening that Republican members of the legislature reached out to me when the news broke about the mayor potentially going on an ambassadorship and their excitement about the possibility of us being able to work even closely, more closely together. So these are things that I'm confident that we can solve, and why do I think I can do the job? Well, I think there are a few reasons. One is that I've got lived experience in the most depressed, disadvantaged neighborhoods in Milwaukee. As I said, I spent my formative years in 53206. I've also seen the job of mayor up close as a low-level staffer, but I've seen the job. I've been there. I know what it entails. I know what the commitments are. And I've served not just a member, not just as a member of the common council, but also as its president. I know the legislative body of the city as well. The first test, I think, about how I would lead as mayor is going to be my approach on ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. And my goals are these, especially with this first tranche of funds, is to create more access to affordable housing. It's to invest a significant sum into abatement of lead-in homes, and it's to be fiscally prudent to free up use of tax levy dollars so that we can address our looming pension crisis that we have coming up. I'm committed to Milwaukee. I've got the passion and the energy to get the job done, and I'm ready to go to work as mayor of our city. And I'm ready to answer your questions as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you so much for being with us today. I wanted to start with the pension because so much of what happens in the City of Milwaukee will depend on how much goes into the pension in the coming years. So as you're aware, the annual contribution is expected to spike sharply next year, and so time is of the essence, whether you're a common council president or acting mayor or if you've been elected by that time. What specific steps are you planning to take in the next year to try to address this issue so that you can get to these other priorities that you've just listed?
Yeah, well, that's a great question because, again, the pension obligation is looming. It is large, and it potentially could have a devastating impact on the levels of service that we're able to deliver to the residents in the City of Milwaukee if we're not able to get it under control. As I said, we're not able to move many things, the really big and important things that we need to do without assistance from Madison. And so, over the course of the next year, and I've already been doing it, as a matter of fact, I partnered with the county executive, and we traveled four hours north to Linnler in northern Wisconsin to tell the Joint Finance Committee, the folks that are in charge of writing the budget, the state budget, that the City of Milwaukee, the County of Milwaukee, need help to solve the fiscal issues that we face. So I'll continue to work on that issue, reaching out to especially Republican legislators, especially those Republican legislators that have districts that are nearby to Milwaukee or perhaps they even have some wards representing the City of Milwaukee as well. So I will continue to do that work. I've already started doing that work. And the other thing that I think is important, again, is how we spend our ARPA dollars. I think, you know, we're going to be under a microscope with having all of these dollars coming in, and so the state that has all the keys to be able to help us, they're going to be watching how we spend it. And so I think having some fiscal prudency is going to show that, show the state that we are interested in solving our issues, and we'll do what we can by ourselves, but at the end of the day, this money's not going to last forever, and we need the state to be our partner on that. So those are going to be my actions, not just now, but over, over the course of the next year as well.
Thanks, President Johnson. Good to see you again. Thanks for being here. Happy to chat for a bit. Talk about the legislature being a partner in that. Talk about the current relationship between the City of Milwaukee and the state legislature, specifically state Republicans right now. Why is the relationship the way that it is, and how would you seek to improve it either as acting mayor or elected?
Yeah, I think that the relationship between the city and the state is poor, quite frankly. I know, I was just asked recently on a, on a news program about this, about the same sort of issue here, and the reporter said, basically, the state government just doesn't like Milwaukee, quite frankly. They're, they're out to get Milwaukee. And there may be a number of reasons for that. Some of them, I think, may just be political about the, because of the people who happen to be in charge in the legislature and who happen to be in charge currently in the city. That's why I think having a, a new face, a new generation of leadership is so critically important for, for turning the dial on. So, like I said, over the course of the past year, as council president, I've already been doing outreach to members of the legislature, especially on the Republican side, because they're the ones that have the power, and those meetings have gone well. I was, like I said, it was very heartening when Republican members reached out to me learning the news that I would step up to be acting mayor because they want to work with, they want to work with me, they want to work with a new generation of leadership. So I'm very confident, I'm very hopeful as well, that we'll be able to solve some of the things that have not been able to be addressed in the current city administration for some time with a new, with new leadership in the mayor's office.
Thank you. Hello, Council President Johnson. I have a question standing in Madison. So there's a group of legislators from the Milwaukee area that are pushing the state for more funding, for sufficient funding to build a type-one youth facility here in Milwaukee as one of the methods to bring youth home from Lincoln Hills and close that youth prison. Obviously, they need support from local officials to accomplish that. One, do you support the construction of a type-one secure facility here in Milwaukee? And if not, what else can we do to bring youth from Milwaukee home and help that facility be closed?
Thank you. That's a, that's an excellent question, and as I said, before I was elected, I worked in workforce development for a number of years, and one of my assignments, working on workforce development, was to work with at-risk young people, including young people who had been assigned to Lincoln Hills. So I've made the trek. I've been there. It's not easy to get to, and I know that there have been efforts to have coach buses to take families up to the middle, middle northern part of the state, but that's not always accessible to folks. You know, folks have to work, or they have other children. That's a, that's a difficult trek. And not to mention the fact that the wraparound services that would help these young people are primarily located here in the City of Milwaukee, right? They're primarily located here in the greater Milwaukee area. So to expect that those sort of things are going to be readily available to those young people to help them to reemerge into society, I think, is silly. I think it's, it's a good move to bring those young people back here because when you look around, you know, our neighborhoods, these, these are all kids. These are, these, all of our kids, all of these kids are our kids, I should say. And I, I constantly try to stress that to folks, is that we're going to pay for these kids one way or the other. All of these kids are ours, okay? So we're either going to pay for them on the front end by making investments in their education, investments in preventative programs, you know, the like, or we're going to pay for them in the back end in the punitive system. I would much rather that we do it on the front end. And for those young people who unfortunately are involved in the carceral system right now, in order to help to rehabilitate them, to get back to society so that they don't reoffend, it's important that they have those resources available to them, and the best way for that to happen is for those kids to be here at home so they can have access to their families, so they get better access to wraparound services as well. So I do support having a Lincoln Hills replacement here in Milwaukee. If the kids are coming from here, then I don't see a reason why they shouldn't be housed here as well.
I wanted to come back to Milwaukee. You've said over the course of your, I think, well, over the course of your career, actually, that you've experienced all the love and pain in 53206 and other distress that folks can muster. I'm hoping that you can talk a little bit about how your, like, experience, you know, growing up in the city and also, you know, your professional experience, volunteer experience have, or I guess would change how you approach the job of mayor and how you prioritize, you know, the many issues facing the city to really address the disparities in Milwaukee.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. As I said, you know, I, we didn't have a lot growing up, and I moved, and I moved around a lot, and I'm the first to admit that I'm lucky. I'm lucky to have been able to get out of 53206 and other depressed neighborhoods generally unscarred, but I've got a lot of siblings. My parents separated when I was three. They have since remarried, and you have my stepmom and my, and my stepdad, and each been remarried for more than 20 years. So I've got a total of nine siblings, and all of my siblings were not as fortunate as I was. When you talk about young black men being incarcerated, half of them from 53206, you know, I'm two years old or two years younger than one of my brothers, and our lives couldn't be more different. Whereas I went to college, he went to jail, and he's been in and out of jail for the, basically since he was a teenager. As a matter of fact, I've got another brother who's in law enforcement and, or actually, I'm sorry, in the Department of Corrections, and so I've had situations in life where I've got one brother who's running the jail and has custody of prisoners, and I've got another brother who is a prisoner, right? And so that, those things inform my thinking, would inform my thinking as mayor and how I would approach things. I know that one of the things that's critically important to folks, again, is access to opportunity. I was just having a conversation this morning about, you know, why there are certain groups of people who, you know, think that they have an easier path in life, and there are certain, and other groups like the African-American community don't, and it really boiled down to access to opportunity. You know, for some folks, it's just there. It's, they don't have to, they don't have to think about it. It's not something that they have to work for and scratch toward and claw toward. It's just there for them, whereas African-Americans, every generation, it seems like, we have to start from the bottom. And those are things that I recognize, things that we need to change. In the neighborhoods, I think, having access to family-supporting jobs would put, and family-supporting jobs with good wages would put African-Americans and people of color in a position to be able to realize that opportunity. I think that housing, another thing that was very important for me growing up, because we moved around so much, I think access to stable housing is also going to be something that is critically important. And I know that I was lucky to have access to, you know, these youth-serving programs. Again, you know, for me, it was YMCA. For, you know, the county executive, it was Urban Underground, and for so many other people, these youth-serving programs helped us, helped to save their lives, helped to steer them in the direction that they needed to go. And if we have more of those things in our society, stable housing, access to good quality jobs where parents can, you know, keep their, their kids under one roof, have some ownership, be a cohesive force in their neighborhoods, those things, I think, spill out to the streets, they spill out to the schools, they spill into society overall. So those are the things, I think, are going to inform me is the way that I grew up and the things that I experienced growing up in the City of Milwaukee.
And just to follow up on that, you know, what specific mechanisms available to the city would you use to accomplish those goals as it relates to housing, as it relates to family-supporting jobs?
Well, I'm, I'm interested in looking at opportunities that we may have with our CDGA office, our Community Development Block Grant Office, because, again, as I go back to my own experience growing up and traveling literally across the city, like, I've seen the whole city just via my education because we moved around so much. If there is an opportunity for us to be more creative with those dollars to stabilize housing, especially for kids, especially for families with children attending school so they can go to one school and don't have the disruption, that, I think, can be a, a strong stabilizing force to, to help kids. And I think there are other programs that, that have taken place across the country that we also might be able to look at. For instance, in Maryland, I believe, or perhaps not Maryland, perhaps it was in New York, but there's a program, I believe, called Youth Stat. And the goal is to get, to identify young people who may be susceptible to, you know, going down the wrong path and wrapping services around them to make sure that, you know, they have mentorship, they have access to a summer youth job, that they have, you know, the, the mental health support, things like that. Those are things that, I think, could put us in a position to better address the issues of crime and violence on our, on our, on our streets that we see every day.
Earlier, you talked about the pursuit of purpose, and I'll interpret purpose to be the ability to affect positive change. There are a number of roles both in and out of politics, either elected, appointed, simply working as a staffer, where a lot of people have the ability to affect positive change. And I want to ask you to predict your own political future, perhaps past this position. But what is it about being the mayor of the City of Milwaukee that makes you feel like you have the greatest impact to address positive change going forward, and why is that position at this time so important to you to pursue?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think it really goes back to, it really goes back to my own upbringing here. Like, I, if, if I made it out of 53206, and if I, and there's nothing special about me. Look, I'm like five foot nothing, like, I can't, I can't play sports, like, there's, there's totally nothing special about me, but I know that when given a chance, given an opportunity, young people in this, in this city can excel, they can succeed. I know that. I've lived it, and I think that being mayor would provide me an opportunity to be able to put more, more people, especially the people that live here, in a position to excel just like I have been able to. Those are the, really, the things that drive me. Somebody asked me a similar question a couple of days ago, and, you know, like I said, I've got three kids, right? And so I've got an 11-year-old son, and I've got, you know, two three-year-old daughters, twin daughters, and so we, we spend a lot of time watching Disney Plus, right? So we watch Moana a lot and Frozen a lot, and they're starting to, to like Lion King, which they should have a long time ago, but we won't go there. And so, when I was talking to the person recently about a similar question that she just asked, and I'm watching these Disney movies, and I see Simba, like, Simba was living in paradise, right? When Nala found him, you know, after Uncle Scar killed Mufasa. Think I would find a way to...
We're going down a road I did not anticipate. Paradise.
But, 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 but Simba came back. He came back to Pride Rock. He didn't, he didn't have to do it. He could have taken his ball and stayed wherever he was in this paradise that he was in, but he said, "No, this is home, and I need to do what I can do. Even if I lose along the way, I need to, I need to do what I can do to improve home." And that's, that's kind of why I'm, why I'm so passionate about being mayor of our city, because I know that there's a lot of promise in Milwaukee, and I want to see it realized in every neighborhood across our city.
And a quick follow-up on that, it's not breaking news that Milwaukee has not had a lot of footmakers in the past. Without once again predicting your long-term future, is this a role that you would anticipate filling for years and in terms to come?
Well, I think we should take it one step at a time. As I, as I said in my statement when the news, the mayor's nomination for the ambassadorship came up, I said, "Look, we have one mayor at a time in Milwaukee, and until such point that he resigns after Senate confirmation, Tom Barrett is that mayor. I certainly will, when that happens, step up and be the acting mayor of our city." As I said in my statement when the news, the mayor's nomination for the ambassadorship came up, I said, look, we have one mayor at a time in Milwaukee. And until such point that he resigns after Senate confirmation, Tom Barrett is that mayor. I certainly will, when that happens, step up and be the acting mayor of our city. I'm ready to do that. I'm in position to do that. I am running to be the mayor of the city of Milwaukee. I intend to win that election. I intend also to run for election in 2024. I intend to win that election as well. But I, I don't want to say what might happen in the future because I've got to make sure that we take care of these steps that are in front of us right now first.
There's been some criticism in the community of the man you're replacing, Mayor Tom Barrett, that he didn't do enough during his tenure to improve the quality of life for African Americans in the city, that he didn't sufficiently address issues such as mass incarceration, unemployment, violent crime, things like that. First, what do you think about that criticism? And what will you do maybe differently? Or what are your plans to improve the quality of life for African Americans in the city?
Thank you. I think no matter, well, I guess before I answer the question, go back to something that just happened, I believe, two days, two days ago, I want to say. I was on a neighborhood walk in my district on the northwest side of the city. And initially, the walk started off as, you know, or at least I thought I was going there to address things like getting a speed hump installed or making sure that we cut back vegetation that was growing to the public right away. But people from the neighborhood just continued to flock to the walk. And eventually we stopped walking and we started talking. We started talking about the things that you're talking about. We started talking about crime, we started talking about employment, we started talking about youth and opportunities for young people in our city. And it ultimately came down to this, is that the people on that block and that neighborhood, they're no different than the folks who live on the southwest side of the city or the folks who live on the east side of the city, or the folks who live on the west side of the city or locations in the city north and west of that. Everybody wants peaceful, quiet and safe enjoyment of their neighborhoods. They deserve that. They don't deserve to, you know, walk out of their home, like I was just told the other day near Marshall High School, and to be walking your son or your grandson and to have a car jump on the curb, driving directly at you and then veering off at the last second trying to intimidate you and frighten you. They don't, they don't deserve that. They don't deserve to have people pulling out guns like they did at Midtown and shooting 300 rounds into the air, scaring not just the people who live nearby, but people who live far away about the safety of their overall neighborhood. Folks don't deserve that. What they do deserve though is opportunities to feel safe. They do deserve opportunities to have meaningful employment opportunities in their neighborhoods. So Mayor Barrett certainly has had criticism and some of it rightly placed in terms of what's happened in the neighborhoods. I think even he would agree that there are things in the neighborhoods that he wanted to get going, but just didn't see the light of day. I can think, you know, right now off top, Century City, that once in a while, years ago, used to employ thousands and thousands and thousands of individuals with good paying work. It was said that, you know, back in the day in Milwaukee, all you needed for a good, a good living for yourself and for your family was to have an alarm clock and a strong back. And the jobs at Century City provided that. However, the jobs at what was then, or what is now Century City provided that. But it just hasn't taken off the way that perhaps he would have liked. And I think the way that members of our community would have liked to see too. Because like I said, folks want those sort of opportunities in their neighborhoods. And that's what I'll be trying to tackle as mayor, is getting those opportunities back into our neighborhoods. And again, it can't just be the old thought about large scale, heavy industrial manufacturing jobs. There needs to be a new approach to jobs, right? It's got to be manufacturing where we can get it, certainly, but it's got to be green jobs. It's got to be tech jobs. It's got to be, you know, these collaborative business opportunities. It's got to be luring supply chains here. It's got to be working to make sure that we attract remote workers, building up opportunities for people in our community to earn a sustainable living, not just to keep their house and have some stability in their neighborhoods, but also to take their dollars and to spend them on our historic commercial districts. Like I understand the suburbs have basically a monopoly on the malls, I get that. But that doesn't mean that we should, that we should see the opportunity for people to shop locally to the suburbs either. Like the more that we're able to get economic opportunity and dollars into the pockets of people who live in this city, the more we'll see a rebirth of our historic commercial districts. I've been saying for years, I still believe it to this day, that Billard Avenue, for instance, has the bones to be a Brady Street North. We can do that, but folks need jobs and opportunities to have good, or to have good money in their pockets in order to support those businesses there. We could replicate that same sort of thing on the south side, at historic Mitchell Street Bed. We could do the same thing on the north side as well, in Sherman Park, on the Mosaic on Burla. There are so many opportunities, but it starts off with stability at work and good paying jobs.
Another question. Several years ago, there was a program aimed at supporting fathers of color in Milwaukee, the Milwaukee Fatherhood Initiative. I think even before the pandemic, I hadn't heard much about the program anymore. And I haven't heard anything since, it's been a couple of years now. Just wondering if the Fatherhood Initiative is still active? And if not, what other types of programs do you plan to create or support to help fathers in Milwaukee?
Yeah, thank you. I believe so. I'd have to get back to you on that because I don't know the answer to that off top, but I think that's something we can, we can look back on. But folks in this room, I think, you know, understand, and I think in our community, people generally understand too, that the best program out there, bar none, is access to a good job, right? You talk about fathers and fatherhood. Look, I'm a father myself and I know that for me, what I want to do every day, every night is to make sure that my family is taken care of, that they are safe, that they're well provided for. And so if we go back, you know, again, to the employment piece and transforming what it means to have jobs in the city of Milwaukee, that's the best program that we possibly could have, is making sure that the men, the fathers in this community have access to meaningful jobs with family supporting wages. That's what I'm going to be working on as mayor.
You were first elected to the county council in 2016. You talked a lot about your experience. I guess I was hoping to talk with you too about, you know, after five years as an elected official. I guess would you say a little bit more about why, you know, why you feel like you're prepared to be mayor of the largest city in the state after, you know, only five years in elected office?
Yeah, well, I think that's a great question. And I think that, I think that I can answer that question by just looking, not just at some of the things that we've done in the council, but also the lived experience, right? Certainly Milwaukee is the largest city in the state and the mayor of this city has an impact here, but also has an impact regionally and to some respects statewide. But I think when you look back at the lived experience that I have, again, in the most depressed neighborhoods in Milwaukee, spending my formative years in zip codes like 53206, having been in the mayor's office and seeing the job up close, as well as not just being a member of the county council, but serving as its president as well, there's nobody else that has that breadth of experience that can bring those experiences, that level of experience to the position of mayor. And I think that uniquely qualifies me to serve in the position.
All right, forgive my ignorance on this. I will plead the fifth to a certain degree. Mayor Tom Barrett, yesterday I believe, presented his $1.7 billion budget for the city, also mapped out his plan to use those as our funds which you had discussed. I know the timeline of his potential ambassadorship obviously is in flux. With that budget now being presented as is, have you been able to see it, review it? And how can that budget potentially impact what you would do as acting mayor? Obviously, once again, the timeline being kind of up in the air right now.
Yeah, the timeline certainly is up in the air. That's the great unknown in our community is when the senate will act, when Tom Barrett will be confirmed to his ambassadorship. And yes, the budget was delivered just yesterday, I think probably about, I don't see a clock, but probably about 24 hours ago. So have I had the opportunity to go through all $1.7 billion of it? No, but that's something that we obviously will be, will be working on in the, in the weeks and month or so ahead. The Finance Personnel Committee will be receiving the budget and will be going through the budget review process over the course of October. I'll be involved in that process and then we'll adopt the budget on November 5th, which is a special day in my mind because that's the day I was born. So I'll be spending my birthday adopting the city budget. So again, I haven't, I haven't had the opportunity to see every single line in the budget, but that's something that we certainly will be reviewing over the course of the next month.
I know you've been very active in issues related to reckless driving, but as someone, you know, anyone who lives in this city knows, it's a problem that doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon. What else can we do aside from increasing, you know, traffic safety unit, engineering changes and things like that? They don't seem to be hitting home with the people who are doing the driving. So when, when do we start looking at things like booting and towing cars and things like increased penalties for reckless driving and stolen cars and things like that?
Yeah, well, that's, that's a great question and something that, you know, I'm really sensitive to because in my district, over the course of the past, you know, month or two, we've had a number of high profile reckless driving incidents. At Marshall High School, which is in my district and around the corner from my house, quite frankly, we've had people riding on the grounds of the campus. As soon as school lets out, you get people jumping in cars and chasing down kids who are just completing their school day. In my district, over at 60th and Hampton, you've had, we had, you know, two individuals, two young men who lost their life due to no fault of their own. At 76th and Silver Spring recently, a horrible, terrible reckless driving accident took, you know, two additional lives, also in my Aldermanic district. I was going to Target to get something for my kids a couple of nights ago and on my way back down on Capitol Drive, which is prolific for reckless driving, there was a car that was, that was mangled. It hurts my mind's eye to even think about what that vehicle looked like. It was totally destroyed. So reckless driving is certainly an issue. There are things that we can do, can continue to do, some of which I talked to that neighborhood group that I was with that I just talked about earlier, that's partnering with, you know, our neighborhood residents on our blocks to install more traffic calming speed humps, to put more roundabouts in. Those are becoming ever more popular in the city in order to slow that reckless driving behavior down. There are other infrastructure changes that we need to see on the larger streets, the main thoroughfares in our city, be it a Capitol Drive or 76th Street or what have you. Some of that is going to require us to continue to work with the state because some of those streets are, even though they're in the city, they're technically under the jurisdiction of the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And so we'll need to continue to work with them in order to, in order to make sure that we can have the changes that we need to, in essence, take the toys away, you know, from individuals who are driving recklessly. And another thing you mentioned is enforcement, you know, right? The traffic safety unit. I just did a ride along just the other day with the traffic safety unit. I'll be going out with them again sometime soon. And I tell you, I mean, some of the stuff that I saw right away once I got into the vehicle was egregious, was totally egregious. We got into a vehicle, there was a car right on Capitol Drive, and I believe the speed limit on Capitol is 35 miles per hour. There was a vehicle that was passing us at at least 60. And we then started to pursue, the vehicle picked up speed and then got in excess of 85 miles per hour to obey the police. We saw some incidents where individuals were driving exclusively in the bike lane, just making that their own lane and not, and not regarding, you know, the safety of if somebody were to be in that lane. Saw somebody driving 65 miles per hour on Appleton Avenue in a 35 mile per hour zone. So enforcement, I think, certainly has to be a part of this. I was happy to join Chief Norman earlier this year when they launched the traffic safety unit. They actually launched it in the second Aldermanic district. And to date, I think they've had about 14,000 or give or take contacts with individuals. Not all of those were citations, not all of them needed to be citations. Quite frankly, some of the folks that we stopped on the ride along were not citations at all. It was just, hey, did you know you were going this fast? You know, in a speed limit zone, that's not, that's not a highway, right? So it's, it's education. That's part of the, part of the job of the traffic safety unit. So, but there, but there are folks, again, that are really egregious in their actions and those folks should be held to account, right? So there does, there does need to be some accountability that's paid there. There needs to be some citations given to folks. But we also, you know, need to not just stop there. There are some people who are driving in vehicles that are stolen, right? And to the degree that we're able to do it, if we can take those toys away as well, if we can get those vehicles off the street, if we can tow those vehicles, which I'd be in support of if we're able to get it done, I think they're looking at it now. If we can get those vehicles off the street, get them back to their owners, that, that would be a good thing. And that would help to cut down on reckless driving as well.
So the mayoral race is kicking off in the middle of what feels like a million other things that are going on. There's the ARPA money that you've mentioned, the budget cycle, redistricting, pension challenge, day-to-day resident challenges that I know council members get calls about. I've had some people say, you know, this mayoral election could be a distraction from all of these very important issues that council members need to, need to address and that, you know, with multiple members running potentially, there might not be an incentive, right, to help you achieve your goals, whether as council president or as acting mayor. What do you think about that? And do you think this is going to be a distraction to the council?
You must have heard that quip that Alderman Spiker made yesterday about, you know, potentially an acting mayor Johnson or a mayor, Mark Borkowski, the other day. I, I don't see it as a distraction. Look, even though I've been running for mayor actively, I still am out there addressing issues in my neighborhood. I still get out into my district, I still do community walks, I still call my constituents back on a daily basis when folks call down to the office. So, and I would, I would assume that my colleagues are doing just the same, those folks that are interested in running for mayor. So I don't see it, you know, really as a distraction. I think we can walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. And that's exactly what, what I've been doing. And I think, you know, my colleagues can do the same.
Do you think it'll, I guess, change the politics of the council at all?
Would it change the politi, the running for mayor or the end result?
The running for mayor, the, you know, the race at this point in time.
No, I, there is no evidence of that right now. So I'm not, I don't want to speak anything into existence, but I'm not seeing that, you know, the fact that I'm running for mayor or that other members are interested at least in running for mayor is, has changed any of the politics of the council at this time.
Let's talk about COVID-19 for a little bit. I don't think that's an editorial comment to say that we're not in a good place either in Milwaukee, the state or the country right now. We've been averaging 60 new cases a day about two and a half months ago. Statewide, we're now averaging around 3,000 new cases a day. Saturday will mark a year and a half since Governor Tony Evers' initial safer home order went into effect. We're on an upswing with cases, hospitals are filling up, ICUs filling up, various urgent care centers across the state are now shutting down so that staffers can go work in emergency rooms. What tools would you have in your toolbox as acting mayor or elected mayor? What should the city be doing perhaps right now to try to turn this around? Or are we simply at the mercy of what we're seeing elsewhere across the state and the country and we just have to sit back and kind of let this ride out? Because vaccination rate at this point is about as slow as me running the 400 back in high school.
At least you could run the 400 back in high school. No, you're, you're right. The COVID-19, again, has devastated us in so many different ways, be it in terms of health, in terms of our education, in terms of our economy as well. I think the tools that we have at our disposal are using the best tool that we have available right now, which is the, which is getting folks vaccinated. And we need to continue to press that, continue sending folks door to door to try to get folks vaccinated. I know that the governor put forward a $100 incentive so that individuals getting their first shot of the COVID-19 vaccine would be able to get $100. That has a sunset date. And so the city, in an effort to get more people, and right here in the city of Milwaukee to get vaccinated, is picking that up as well. So, so the city is putting forward an incentive for folks to get vaccinated too. We just have to continue pushing that. This isn't as if this is a problem with no solution. There's a solution right in front of us and it's vaccination. And so we should be doing all that we can, speaking up about it, being good ambassadors for it, and doing all that we can to encourage people to get vaccinated. Myself, along with my colleagues at Milwaukee County, the county executive, the county board chairwoman, we got our vaccines and we did it publicly. We got it on camera because we wanted to be voices out there encouraging people, especially in those neighborhoods where there's very little vaccination happening, that the vaccine is safe. is safe, it's effective, and it's the best tool that we have to fight this deadly disease. So that's what we, that's what we need to be doing. We need to be trying to find whatever ways possible to get shots in the arms of folks, whether it's paying folks $100, like the governor did and as the mayor's administration has proposed, whether it's having these trusted voices in the community coming out and saying this, or whether it's pointing to the fact that, hey, we got hospital beds that are filling up not just here but across the state, and you don't want to be one of those. You don't want someone in your family to be a person occupying one of the hospital beds. So go and get the vaccination. That's what we need to be pushing.
Despite the fact that Hispanics and African-Americans in the county have higher rates of COVID infection, hospitalization, and even death, they still lag behind their other groups in terms of vaccination rates. And it's, you know, obviously it's probably not political, and maybe it's more related to mistrust of government, mistrust of pharmaceuticals, things like that. So, you know, what's your message to those groups in terms of, you know, getting that back, the vaccine, even, you know, when incentives, they work, but they're not working very quickly. They don't work for everyone.
Yeah, I mean, my, my message is to just look back at the not-too-distant past, right? When COVID first started to be recognized here in Milwaukee, look at the folks that it was affecting primarily. It was affecting people of color. It was affecting the African-American community. Then it went down to the South Side and severely affected the Latino community as well. So look at the people who are being affected. Look at the loss of life that we have suffered unnecessarily in this community. Because again, we have the tool, the best tool available to fight and defeat COVID at our disposal right now, and it's free. It's a vaccine. So I'd encourage people all across the board, but especially folks who have been marginalized in years past because we know that there are health disparities there because of some of those things, to go and get the vaccine. Because again, it's safe, because it's effective, and because it'll help to save lives. So that's my message to folks, and I've tried to, again, exemplify that on a personal level by going to get both of my vaccine shots publicly. I should, this is probably a good reminder to talk with my colleagues at the county because perhaps we can do it again with the booster shops, with the booster shots coming available for all groups relatively soon, to go out and do it publicly again to encourage more people, especially in those underserved communities, to go and get this shot so they can save their lives and the lives of people that they love.
Well, I want to thank our media panel, Allison, Jason, and Edgar, and I'm going to open it up to the audience for questions, but actually I have a question first. It's a follow-up to what was already asked. You talked about Century City not being successful, and also Reed Street Yards has not been as successful as I know the mayor and others have liked it to be. But how would you bring business to these parks? I know one of the things is, you know, you have to draw companies to these areas. So how would you do that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and I think, I think in the case of Reed Street Yards, there's been some success there, right? Because although there was some struggle initially, Wright-Hite Corporation is moving their headquarters, their whole operation from Brown Deer to Walker's Point. So that, I think, will fill out actually Reed Street Yards, which is a positive thing. They're bringing jobs down to that area. In the case of Century City and some of the other places, I think that President Biden made this pitch to Build Back Better, right? He talked about the need to build upon green jobs in the United States, jobs that cannot be exported like those manufacturing jobs of old that have gone to right-to-work states in the South and have gone to Mexico and have gone to places overseas. That's a tremendous opportunity right there in itself, I think, to work with the president's administration to make sure that when we're building the solar panels and the wind turbines, the things that in the future they're going to power our energy grid and our economy in the future, that they're built right here in Milwaukee. We can do that at Century City, and I think we have a strong pitch as to why that should happen, right? At that location for, you know, a number of years, for decades, we had people working, toiling at the jobs that were there, those heavy manufacturing jobs. We have the manufacturing know-how, we have the space, and we also have a population that helped to put Joe Biden into office, right? So I think the synergy of all those things could tell the White House and could tell the Biden administration that when we're talking about building back better and changing our economy over to make sure we're prepared for climate change and the like, that those things should happen in communities just like Milwaukee across the United States. So as mayor, that's certainly one of the pitches that I'll be making in order to fill up a place like Century City.
Thank you. Do you have other questions from the audience? Tom?
One single factor in the wealth gap between black people and white people in this country is the much lower homeownership rate of black families. Are there specific things that you'd like to see Department of City Development do under your leadership to encourage more homeownership?
Yes, that's a great question. Again, I think stabilizing neighborhoods is going to be very important. That's why I'm interested in seeing what we might be able to do with the CDGA office to make sure that families with youth who are attending school have stability and they're not having to move around and be transient, right? I've got that experience in my own life. In terms of the Department of City of Development and providing opportunities for folks to have access to housing with ARPA, one of the things that I'm looking forward to doing right now, working with my colleagues, is to have a provision in this first tranche of funds, and I'm working with some of my colleagues, again, to lead on this, to make sure that the DCD has funding available to build modular housing, to build affordable housing all across the city of Milwaukee so that more people have that access to affordable housing in our city. So that, I think, is going to be the first step in making sure their neighborhoods are safe and stable, is making sure that folks have access to that housing. And ARPA, again, is going to be one of the things I'm going to lead on in order to make sure that there's funding available in the apartment, or in the department, rather, apart. We're talking about housing, so I say apartment. Making sure there's funding available in the Department of City Development so that we can tackle that very issue.
Just a quick follow-up here to your first point about promoting your community development block grant.
Correct, correct.
Is the idea there that you'd like to see more of those resources devoted to encouraging homeownership than are presently being done in the mayor's institution?
Yeah, I'm interested in seeing what we may be able to do on the homeownership front with that, but regardless, just across the board, seeing how we may be able to use those dollars to stabilize the neighborhood so that folks, especially families with children, don't have to move from, you know, one place to another because that, again, is destabilizing for children, is destabilizing for their education, and it doesn't help, again, with neighborhood cohesion, which is an underlying effect of public safety, right? So that's what I was getting at with that.
Yes, ma'am. You have expressed a lot of your visions, and I wondered what do you think are some of the barriers to those, to affecting those, including after, you know, ownership or whatever? What kind of barriers do you see in how you encourage that?
That's a, that's a great question, and I, I think that, you know, to a large degree, one of the roadblocks that we've had to date is just the relationship that the city has had with the state, right? If we're able to solve that, if we're able to move the relationship forward between the city of Milwaukee and the state of Wisconsin, then we'll be able to do so many more things in this community. That's why, again, it'll be my goal to have what I call a cot in the Capitol. I'm going to be in the Capitol so much, it's going to make their head spin, advocating for Milwaukee every single day. You know, when it comes to issues like public safety or even some of the other things we want to do, like, you know, collaborative business models or things like that, we need to free up money, and the only way we can do that is if the state provides us more tools to be able to, to be able to go down that road. I think the folks in this room probably are aware, but if you're not, state shared revenue has been on the decline for about 20 years. In fact, they give us about $111 million less than what we got in 2003 in real dollars. That's just not sustainable because even in your own lives, right, the costs for services go up. It seems like only in government that we expect for costs to remain stagnant, to remain flat. That just doesn't happen. So we've seen our costs go up, and the city has made some sacrifices in order to address that, right? We've reduced our workforce. A couple of weeks ago, I was on a, sorry about that, a couple of weeks ago, I was on a community walk as well, and one of my constituents who had been in her home for 40 years asked the question of, you know, why is it that we can't get some of these things addressed? Why, where are the, where are the proactive city services? Why isn't the Department of Neighborhood Services or the Forestry Department or even the police out here like they once were when I first moved into this neighborhood, you know, four decades ago? And a big part of that answer is that, well, the city has sort of transitioned to a complaint-based system because we just don't have the personnel like we once did in these departments in order to address those issues that folks care about in the neighborhood. So if we had more money, then we'd be able to do this. I often say at these Black Watch meetings as well is that only people do things, and typically, you know, we've got, you know, police officers or firefighters that are in the room with me, and I point to them, I say, you know, I'm so grateful that these public servants are there, but they're not going to do it for free. They're not, nor should they, quite frankly. They've got mortgages, they've got children, they've got car notes, they've got things to pay for. And in order for us to have the people to do things, we need money to be able to pay them. And so that, I think, is a huge, probably the biggest barrier that we have to getting, again, the big things done in Milwaukee that we need to.
When?
First, excuse me, it's good to see a fellow Bayview graduate doing so well over a few years between us. The other is that it's a political election that narrows down to two. And so you have to get a majority. We know there's no functioning majority in the city of Milwaukee. Who are you going to search for allies? How, what kind of coalition are you going to put together, strive to put together to get a majority?
Yeah, I think that, well, you got me play out my political playbook here.
No political angle.
Well, first off, I'll go back to your comment about being a fellow Bayview Red Cat, and thank you for mentioning that. It's always nice to see one of my fellow Red Cats. Second of all, I, am I doing well? You know, some folks might say that in terms of my career, but I'm not the executive, at least not yet. We do have a Red Cat who is, who is an executive, my former high school friend and classmate, the county executive, David Crowley, is also a Bayview Red Cat. In terms of the coalition that I need to build, look, I think I need to win a broad swath of folks from different persuasions across the entire city of Milwaukee. So it's not just going to be, you know, one group or another. I think I need to have a message that appeals to people no matter where they live in the city of Milwaukee. That's, that's exactly what I intend to do.
The woman in red?
Yes, I know you mentioned a lot around black men needing access to jobs, but I haven't heard you mention anything about what your plan is around systemic and structural racism and how that is really at the root of the reason why a lot of black men are not able to get jobs. And then the other thing, if I haven't heard you mention anything around police violence.
Yeah, well, that's a great question. And on the issues of systemic racism, we've been working to address that in this, we've been working to address that in the city. And so what we started is, at the city, is creating an Office of Equity and Inclusion to address those issues inward. In terms of systemic racism and the lack of opportunity, especially for people of color, African-American men in particular, in terms of jobs and opportunities out in the community, when you, when you look at, you know, folks who are managers or the leaders of business here, even though we have majority-minority city and our county and our regioners are starting to trend that way as well, you don't see that in the higher-up ranks of businesses here. And so I know there's been efforts, efforts that I support, quite frankly, to make sure that we turn that page. I think it's really important that we do that, that we bring those voices up to the top so that we can hear and understand the root causes of why people who live in this community don't have the access to those sort of jobs, those sort of leadership jobs, which help to change the culture when you're on the inside. You can work to change the culture that way. So that's something that's very important. In terms of police violence, you're absolutely correct. We've seen that. We all have lived that, not just the pandemic, but also the repercussions of the murder of George Floyd at the hands of a police officer in Minneapolis last year. And so some of the things that I've done on the council and my colleagues have worked on as well is trying to put forward reforms that the Fire and Police Commission could adopt. And so I've done that. I know some of my colleagues have done that. We've worked to put forward things so that if somebody's calling for help in the back of a squad car, like the issue with Derek Williams, that the police officers have to listen, they have to make sure that they render aid. I put forward a measure to make sure that the police department adopts these, this national eight can't wait policy, and the idea is that when each of these items is adopted, the less and less likelihood there is that the interaction between police and a member of our community would end up in a violent altercation or death. So there are things that we have worked on. Certainly there are more things that we can't work on, but that, that's a real issue, and it's not going away, it's something that we need to confront. There needs to be continual police reform in Milwaukee and across the nation.
Do we have any other questions? Yes, sir.
On reckless driving, on social media a couple days ago, you had mentioned a vision that with regards to the engineering side that would involve a restructuring of the Department of Public Works. Could you speak to that and what your philosophy would be towards road design in the city of Milwaukee?
Sure, absolutely. So, well, first of all, I did not expect for that tweet to get as much attention as it did, but I was glad that it did because public safety and reckless driving particularly is, it's a huge issue in our city. I mean, that's, in my office, it's the number one call that we get. And it's not just at, you know, the high schools, and I've got Madison High School and Marshall High School, it's just on the roadways generally, no matter where you drive in the district. And so my thought is this, is that a big, bold change could happen in the way that we, the way that we design our streets, in the way that we approach infrastructure in the city of Milwaukee. And so the idea that I have, and it's just an idea right now, but it's something that I'm interested in pursuing or looking at, studying, is the creation of a local Department of Transportation. So we would take the transit priorities and duties out of the Department of Public Works and have its own department. And my goal would be for the DPW that remains to tackle the issues that it already does, right? For leaf collection, as we are now in fall, garbage collection, recycling collection, things like that. But this new department, this MKE DOT, as it were, this local Department of Transportation, would focus on issues about how do we make our streets safer, not just for people and automobiles, but for people who are pedestrians, people who like to walk in their neighborhood, people who are bicyclists? How do we get more protected bike lanes? How do we install not just more speed humps but roundabouts in our neighborhoods? How do we reduce traffic lines so that, you know, cars don't have the opportunity to pass on the right? And to that point of passing on the right, which is probably the most egregious reckless driving behavior, how do we get more curb extensions in our neighborhoods too? Basically, how do we slow traffic down? How do we get our streets, how do we get our city even, to become a place where people not just pass through but experience? That's, to me, that's what cities are supposed to be. They're not supposed to be just, you know, a thing that people pass through to get from point A to point B. Cities are supposed to be something that people feel. They're supposed to have energy and dynamism, and they're supposed to be places where people actually stop and do commerce. That's what I want to get to, and that's what I think what a local Department of Transportation, a MKE DOT, could eventually help us to get to.
Yes, ma'am. I'm also from, and I know that Mayor Bear has been laser-focused on developing downtown area of Milwaukee, opening of dirt lanes to develop other areas, including vibrant tool stations that has been reflected over the years.
That's a great question, and as we were talking about Century City, like, that's something I'm going to be zeroed in and focused on. I had a meeting this morning with a gentleman who's interested in bringing a business to fill the former Starbucks at Midtown. So Midtown is, Midtown is in my district. The Starbucks is closed there. Unfortunately, they were getting robbed too many times, and they finally had enough and they pulled out. But right down the street at Century City, again, you had these opportunities where folks worked family-supporting jobs. They had wages that helped them support themselves and support their family. And so what my goal, what my goal would be is to make sure that we're building up places like that, we're building up Century City, we're putting jobs there. Those jobs and opportunities there will provide opportunities Those jobs and opportunities there will provide opportunities for businesses to grow on the commercial corridors that we have in the city of Milwaukee, including in places like 5 through 206. So we look at, you know, a place like North Avenue, for instance, between the freeway and 27th Street, that's really been seeing a lot of activity pick up. I want to see more of that. And the way that you can get that done is by making sure that people have access to family-supporting jobs off the top in places like Century City and the like. So that's what I want to see. I want to work with our business improvement districts in order to get more money out to those places, because there is organization in some of those bid districts across the entire city, including in places like 5 through 206. I want to see more of that happening across the city of Milwaukee. Another thing that I want to see in 5 through 206, again, is having people who live behind those commercial corridors see the corridors as places where they actually can do their commerce, so that they don't have to travel outside their neighborhood, or even travel outside the city in order to get the things that they need. They should be able to do those things right in the neighborhood where they live. You go on North Avenue, you go on North Avenue, you see this prosperity and poverty, right? So if you start on the east of North Avenue by the lake, you see all this prosperity. And then when you get into neighborhoods where I grew up in, you see this poverty, where the windows are busted out, the doors are boarded up. And to me, as I was thinking about that, being a younger person, that's dangerous, because that begins to seep into the psyche of young people, and they begin to think that that is normal. It normalizes that, and it's not normal. But then you go further west, and you get to the western part of the city, North Avenue starts to pick up again, you see more prosperity. Then you get to Wauwautosa, and you got, you know, the East Tosa area there, and so the prosperity picks up. So we need to get more opportunity on those commercial corridors in the city of Milwaukee and get people to see their commercial corridor in their neighborhood as a place where they can shop. And I think the city, the city can play a role in that, and I want to see that.
Does anyone else have a question? Well, thank you so much, President Johnson, for being here today. Thank you again to our media panel, and thank you to the working journalists. I want to just, again, also thank Spectrum News One, who is politics.com. If you'd like to become a member of the Press Club, please do. Talk to do it. Our next event is September 30th with our annual meeting and a celebration of life for God Wills, and we will let you know when we have more upcoming events. Thank you all for coming today.